Somebody in the market has an issue, one of the vendors has an issue, on a given day. So the immediate thing is they go to gear.
Good evening. This is the Wednesday, February 12, 2014 edition of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. I think we want to start tonight by welcoming our two newly appointed members, Gregory Dickerson and Rebecca Rodd. And we've already chatted a little bit, and I thought we'd have the name tags just as one other way to help remind people of who is who. Welcome, and we'll not take more time out of the agenda for...
Good thing we're here, huh?
Yeah, good thing we're here, because otherwise we wouldn't be having a meeting. I hope that our other members catch up and get here at the 7:30 time. We've moved our meeting time to start at 7:00, and hence the possible confusion. At any rate, the next item is approval of the minutes from January 22nd.
I move their approval.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you. Any observations, corrections?
I did not have any.
Okay, neither did I. So from the standpoint of voting, I think it would be most appropriate if the two of you abstained, since you really work here for this. Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes of January 22nd, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and abstentions.
Abstained.
Okay. You have what you need, Ann?
Yeah.
Correspondence. Does anyone have anything, anything from staff?
Staff.
Anything else for the good of the order? This is a point where sometimes staff will bring forward things that have come in, but sometimes members have something that they kind of want to share with the group. And sometimes we share things by email, but the risk is that it becomes a conversation and that's happening outside of the framework of the meeting.
Gotcha. And so... It can become an open-meeting law.
Right. So it might be, if somebody gets shared, that's fine, it may be fine, but engaging in it then becomes a problem. So this is a spot where those things might come to the table officially.
Okay.
Okay. Joel, Transportation Commission.
The Commission last met on July 9th, and...
July?
Well, January 9th.
Okay.
And we have had a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting since then, so I describe what happened at that meeting. The Transportation Commission, incidentally for the two of you, I served jointly on the Planning and Zoning Commission and Transportation Commission, so I'm sort of liaison between the two. On the next meeting, which will occur tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, there are several items that are up for discussion. One is a discussion of what's referred to as vegetation management, that is maintaining side triangles at intersections, and I assume vegetation encroachment upon sidewalks. Another item listed on the agenda, urban area and functional classifications map, and I'm not sure I know what that means.
That's the official map that the state maintains for all communities for your roadway designations, whether they're minor arterial collector or a local residential street. Only streets that are classified as arterials, minor arterials, or collectors are eligible for federal funding, and so that's really kind of the important aspect of that. So there, I think, have to update these about on a 10-year cycle, and so that is being, I think, reviewed by the Transportation Commission.
There's also to be a discussion on sidewalk improvement program, which apparently relates to ADA requirements. Do you know more about that?
Correct, yeah, and this is actually, was ultimately required many years ago under the ADA Act, that all communities would develop an ADA transition plan, where we would put forth a program to rectify impediments to accessibility throughout the community. So a lot of these deal with sidewalks, your sidewalk conditions, or uplifting of sidewalks and creating impediment, or the ped drops themselves. The city just recently went through the process of developing our transition plan. We had one early draft that didn't have a great level of detail, and in order to be eligible again for additional federal funding, all local jurisdictions are required to update and develop their transition plan. So there was a, that plan has been developed in draft form, I believe it was, there was a public input session that was co-sponsored between the city and the Disability Action Center, and so I'm sure they're taking a look at the outline of that document, and they were soliciting input from the public of priority areas that should be addressed.
Okay. And the final area that's on the agenda for tomorrow is a report on Harvest Hill subdivision. I'm not quite sure what that would involve.
I don't know, maybe it was...
We haven't dealt with it, and...
Yeah, and I think I reported last time on what the council's action was in the subdivision to require the addition of on-street parking on one side of the street. I suspect maybe this is just a report back to the Transportation Commission on that as well.
Subdivision proposals and so on, which involve transportation issues, are also presented to the Transportation Commission, so that's... Sometimes they get to talk about the same issue on two different commissions.
All right, thank you. So next is the open microphone. This is really, looking up at the cameras there, an opportunity for the public who are not here tonight, to come in and use this little piece of our agenda to speak to the Commission regarding matters that are not currently on our agenda or pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And rarely we have someone come in and take advantage of the offering, but generally not. So, on to number six, review of ADU project public input.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, getting into this seven o'clock time changer. Really intense for me, because I've got a plastic...
There's one thing around here.
Thank you.
Here you go, Wendy. Two of these. Oh, several, okay.
Hopefully we have enough to throw around. As the Commissions were on the 22nd, we conducted a public open house session on the ADU project. And so this is, this is a topic that the Commission has been discussing for about the last year, and considering whether accessory dwelling units should be something that should be considered to be allowed within the city of Moscow, we had, if you may recall, we included some questions in the 2012 citizen survey, to try to gauge the community's support and interest in the topic. And then we've been doing research over the course of the last year, and I guess I should say the results of the citizen survey were fairly positive overall. We've looked at the responses in prior meetings. And we conducted research over the course of last year, and it identified, it was identified as a goal for the Commission in our joint meeting with the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And ultimately, we began the public outreach process on the 22nd, early this year, asking for the community to come to an open house meeting, share information about ADUs, how other communities have addressed them, the benefits that the Commission felt they presented for the community, and seeking input overall from those that participated in the meetings. There were, we had, at that meeting, we had a number of stations. We had some poster stations, we had about, I think, seven poster stations, actually they're still downstairs here in City Hall. And then at the end of that, we actually had a brief survey instrument that was intended to help us gain some additional information from the public. The first two questions that we asked were actually the same questions that we asked in the citizen survey, and... Those questions don't appear on here. Let me just see.
ADUs in my...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's all on the same, on the first page, first chart, it's combined there. Let me pull it up. I do have a larger copy here. So one of the first, the two questions we actually asked in the 2012 citizen survey was, the first of which is, would people support accessory dwelling units in their neighborhood? And we had a brief explanation about what ADUs were, so they got a good understanding what we were referring to. Within that, we had a fairly positive response, I think we had 65% overall of the community that either strongly agreed or agreed with allowing them in their neighborhood. So when we started off with the survey instrument, we asked the same two questions, because we wanted to kind of gauge if we're, if the folks that attended the meeting were kind of representative of what we'd heard from the community when you did the random sample survey, through the community survey. So those were the first two questions we started off with on the, on the survey instrument that we had at the meeting. And we had hard copies that were available at the meeting, and then we also had this online on the ADU project website through Survey Monkey, that people who didn't attend the meeting would have an opportunity to participate and be able to provide their input. So the, most, all the questions had a response range on a like-or-scale from strongly agree to strongly disagree, or an option for a don't-know response if they weren't familiar with the subject. It's kind of interesting, and the first question of, would you support allowing ADUs in the neighborhood, we really had either strongly agree, agree, or strongly disagree. So somewhat of a polarized divide between the two. We had, and I should say, we had 28 respondents that completed the survey, so the citizen survey is typically mailed out to a random sample of 1,200 households in the city. Typically, we get a response, you know, in the four to, well, three, upper 380 to 420 is kind of the typical range for the number of responses we receive. And then actually gives us a sample size that allows us to have a fairly accurate confidence interval of under 5% in the response. So this is a very small population, so we need to keep that in mind, and also it's a self-selected population. So if somebody was motivated one way or the other on a subject, you know, they may have taken the time out to attend the meeting or to go to the website and fill out the survey. And I did have several calls from individuals that were very concerned, well, I should say several, I think I had two, where they're very concerned, and maybe one was a call, I think one was an email discussion. And those are the issues I referred, if you please attend the meeting, provide us your input, or if you can't attend the meeting, you know, you have the opportunity to certainly visit the website and fill out the survey and provide us your input in that fashion. So it's not uncommon that in, in this type of situation, you're going to get a fair amount of self-selection, and that can introduce some bias into the results. So the intent of asking the same few questions we had on the citizen survey was really just to kind of gauge what kind of representation we have from the folks that attend the meeting. You know, actually, we had probably a stronger response overall under this survey than we did on the overall citizen survey. So we have 19 individuals out of the 28 responding either strongly agreed or agreed that they would support allowing ADUs in their neighborhood, so that's a fairly strong showing in support. And we had eight individuals that strongly disagreed. So again, kind of a divide, but certainly on the, on the positive side, we had a significantly larger response. We also asked the question on the citizen survey, if ADUs were allowed in their neighborhood, would they be interested in establishing one on their property? And we, you know, we found in the citizen survey generally that there was strong support, but there was fairly modest interest in pursuing ADUs. So we may have had the 65% that were supportive of ADUs in their neighborhood, we only had about 15 to 20% that actually were interested in establishing one. So it was a fairly modest response, and I think that's, that's not unusual. For those that attended the meetings, we had 13, I guess, that either strongly agreed or agreed they'd be interested in pursuing it, three that were neutral, and nine that either disagreed or strongly disagreed that they'd be interested in adding an ADU, and two respondents indicating that they didn't know. So again, fairly similar, where we had strong support, but somewhat modest on a percentage basis, this is probably a little bit higher than we saw in the citizen survey with respect to individuals that would be interested in pursuing an ADU, but still not, not that unusual from what we saw in the citizen survey. We also asked the question, we had a zoning map up on the display that individuals could identify what zoning district they were, their property was located within. And the majority of the respondents were located in the R2 district. Now, R2 is a single-family district, it just is a slightly smaller lot size than the R1 district, but 14 of the respondents resided within the R2 district, three or four within the R3 district, four within R4, and only two within the R1 district. So the majority, 16 out of the 28 respondents, lived in a single-family only residential zoning district, and eight of the respondents lived in a district, either a two-family or multifamily, in the R3 and R4. So again, a fairly large number of individuals that were responding in single-family neighborhoods and also supporting the ADUs in the neighborhood. And we're going to do a little bit more in-depth and look at kind of the individual responses and the percentage responses of folks that happened to be within single-family, the R1 and the R2, as compared to the R3 and the R4. We just pulled the date out today, so we hadn't had a chance to take a look at that, at that level of detail.
But what seems to be interesting there is, in the first two ADUs in my neighborhood there was, there's clearly some folks who came out opposed. They, I think you're right, people came to that meeting for a reason, and they had one of two agendas, and there were seven or eight of them that had a negative agenda. But then when you look at what zone they're in, you say, wow, let's just assume that these are all single-family folks who like their neighborhood the way it is. Well, that's, there are 16 of those, and only eight of them, and I'm making that up, but it doesn't account for, there are some people who might live in a single-family neighborhood who have angst about this idea, or might, but there's clearly others who must live in those neighborhoods that don't, which is just...
And I wonder, I do remember the map being there, but I wonder how many people checked it. I think a lot of people don't know what zone they're in. And so I wonder about the accuracy of that.
Sure.
I mean, people think, oh, I live in a single-family neighborhood, it must be R1. You know, they don't really know.
Right. Well, we saw that with the rezone up by the courthouse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It kind of surprised the neighbors.
Exactly.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's just fun. Then we asked a series of questions regarding how they felt ADUs should be allowed, whether they should be allowed in all residential districts, whether they should be allowed as accessory uses only within the R3 and the R4, which are two-family or multifamily districts, or whether they should be allowed within the R2 and R1 as accessory districts, really just trying to get a sense of whether there was a big divide of whether people felt these types of uses are more appropriate in higher intensity, higher-density residential districts, or whether they're more appropriately located within, or equally suited within lower-density, more single-family predominant districts. So as we looked in, in ADUs in all residential zones, again, we had 14 of the 28 that either strongly agreed or agreed that they should be allowed by right, essentially in all residential districts. We did have that same, probably eight before, that felt that they shouldn't be. And so we had 10 in total that either disagreed or strongly disagreed with them as being a permitted accessory use. It's kind of interesting, then, as you look at the next question, which really was, should they be a conditionally permitted use in all residential districts? And the conditionally used permit allows you an opportunity to have a hearing, input, and comment from the neighborhood. Here, we had even a, we get a strong negative reaction to that question, and whether that's the individuals that are really supportive of it and feel that a CUP should not be required, are also being combined with folks that don't think they should be allowed as a conditionally permitted use. So I think we're getting this amplification on that side of the discussion, which is kind of interesting. We still had eight that felt that either strongly agreed or agreed that they should be managed through a condition use permit, but we had 15 that felt that shouldn't be the case. And of course, it's hard to entirely interpret what that means, whether they shouldn't be allowed, period. But certainly, there was a fairly strong support, and again, you can kind of see the polarizing on the permitted accessory use of the 10 to eight between those two. Then we start to look at whether they should be permitted as an accessory use within the R2 and the R1, which are on the right-hand side of the graph there, that are the predominant... I should probably advance this. It does look like it could be dead. Oh, there's a switch. There we go.
An off switch.
There is. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. So again, this is a question looking at the R3 and the R4 on the left-hand side, so these are two-family, multifamily districts. And certainly, there's a, well, not even really a stronger number, we have 12 in this graph that indicate that they would either strongly agree or agree that they should be permitted accessory use in the R3 and the R4 district, where we have 13 that strongly agree, agree that this should be a permitted accessory use in the R1 and the R2 district. And eight that are neutral. I'm not entirely sure what's, certainly when you get a large response in the neutral that, or in the don't-know, obviously, that indicates that there's some...
Well, you see a breakdown, though, of the strongly disagree disappearing in the medium-density zone, and so four people kind of shifted, well, you know, maybe I'm neutral on it when it's in a medium-density, but don't put it in a single R1.
It's not my neighborhood, so...
Yeah, that's how I read that.
Yeah.
So...
And then coming back to the R1 and the R2, you see fairly strong support as being permitted use, but again, some of that polarization coming up again. So we got the 13 here that are on the strongly agree, agree, and we have 10 on the disagree and strongly disagree. We did ask a question about whether then, one option of allowing ADUs and identifying the location where ADUs could be permissible would be through an overlay zone that didn't necessarily tie directly with, you know, the exact location of the zoning districts that may underlie it. That would allow targeting of locations that were maybe closer to the downtown core or the University of Petal Campus or other locations without having to look at, you know, somewhat the zoning map and following that, that individual order. You got kind of a interesting response, probably because there may be some, maybe lack of understanding about how that would function. So we had four respondents either strongly agreed or agreed on that question, and we had 13 again that either strongly disagreed or disagreed with the concept of managing it through an overlay zone. I think, I think that concept is probably more difficult, probably for people to understand, I would suspect, but it was, it was kind of an interesting, interesting response on that question. One of the other things that the Commission's been talking about for some time is looking at some of the standards, that if ADUs were to be allowed, we've had a fair amount of discussion about standards that may accompany that, those that relate to owner occupancy on the property, whether the entrances, you should only be able to see one entrance from any street frontage so it maintains the appearance of a single-family residence, whether off-street parking should be required for the additional ADU, whether there should be some maximum cap on occupancy, and whether there should be a maximum allowed size of ADUs. And so I know there's been a fair amount of discussion on the Commission, and so we did place questions to try to gauge the opinion of the participants in the process and in the surveys of what they felt were important things to address. Certainly, maximum occupancy and owner occupancy were the two that scored probably the highest, at least on the extremely important scale. So maximum, those, those both here, oh, that's not, hit the wrong button. So the, the maximum occupancy, and that would be having a maximum number of individuals that could reside within the accessory dwelling unit. That, obviously, both in the extremely important and very important scored very high. Owner occupancy scored, again, scored fairly high in the extremely important category, not as high, you know, combined with the very important responses. And maximum square footage is probably the next one, you know, parking, probably maximum square footage would be the next one, that is either square feet or bedrooms, again, from the extremely important to very important, had fairly strong responses. And then off-street parking really was the next one. We had a fairly strong, extremely and very important, but we also had a, probably the strongest not important response on that individual question.
Again, I'm very surprised at that.
You know, I think it could depend upon what you're thinking of when you're considering the ADU. If you're thinking of the mother-in-law or a family member, maybe you don't view that parking as being as important. And it obviously would depend upon what neighborhood you're within, how much available parking there is off-street, and how much on-street parking is...
To my right is City Councilor Dan Corstallan, to my left, Art Beckey, to his left, Acting City Supervisor Bill Bellnapp, and I'm Walter Steed, President of the City Council. The first item of business this afternoon, gentlemen, is the approval of the January 27 minutes.
They look good to me.
I'm perfectly okay with those minutes.
Okay. Three others say they're okay. Item two, Mr. Palmer, a dispersment report for January.
Do you have your magic blue pen?
Did you spend any money last month?
We did. So this is the dispersance report for January 2014, and...
You know, if we were to start on the page here, you know, there's a comment that should be regulated by a number of occupants on a complaint basis only. That's really not, not a way that we can approach it, it needs to be a standard across the board, not only if somebody, if somebody receives complaints. Now, we may only investigate something if you receive a complaint if we have knowledge of it, but we can't have a moving standard. So if we're going to have a standard, it has, it's going to have to be consistent across all, all situations. Again, some comments in the next, looking at, should be permitted in all residential zones, should have a maximum square footage, owner occupation is a good idea, utility billing, so overall, there. The third comment, the P and Z question, word of the survey, supposed to make residents believe they'd be limited to elderly parents, and somebody, and that respondent felt that that's what they should be limited to. And obviously, that was not somebody who was particularly supportive of the concept. So kind of a wide range of, of comments, several of them are recognizing the fact that we do, in many neighborhoods, have a number of these that already are in existence. And so there's, there's a number of comments about that. And I think overall, most of the comments generally were really fairly positive. There certainly are, you know, some individuals that are concerned about them. But without me providing these to you, so you can take some time to read through those, and then we can come back and review them again at the next meeting.
You don't happen to have any information on, like, on the second comment about what lenders would think about, is this, if it has an ADU, if it's a duplex in their eyes or not?
At this, I don't. I do know that in, I think Nils identified in a few publications, that the requirement that the owner occupy the property or occupy, live on the property, either within a primary home or within an ADU, could potentially cause some concern for a lender. If they happen to take possession of the home potentially on foreclosure...
Oh, yeah.
...then they may not, or may be prohibited by, by a deed restriction to be able to rent the home out to recover some income while they're trying to sell the property.
They could only rent one of the units.
Well, they, and honestly, they may not, yeah, they could probably rent the home, but the ADU just would not be allowed to use. And depending on, you know, what income was necessary, you know, which places qualify for the loan, you know, that could cause a concern to a lender.
Okay, so we can take away...
Okay, so we can take away the written comments and all this all over, and when will ADU come back?
I'm anticipating it will come back next meeting.
Okay, two weeks.
So in two weeks. You know, really, I guess the intent was, this was our first public outreach effort, really wanted to assess what we saw and heard, decide, you know, how the commission would like to proceed based upon the inputs that we've received through this process. I had anticipated, because we discussed in the past, that we would, you know, at this meeting, we really weren't presenting any type of proposal about how they would be permitted, where they'd be permitted, or what standards would be required. We just wanted to introduce the topic and get information and feedback before moving to that stage. So then the next step for us would be to take a look at some of the items that we've discussed in the past, really begin to formulate and make decisions about, is this something that the commission still wishes to pursue? If it is, then formulate how we think they would be best approached in consideration of how they should be allowed, and what zoning districts, and what mechanism or method, and what standards should be applied. I think we would then conduct a second open house meeting where we actually have that formulated and solicit additional comment when the public has something to actually react to. Really didn't have a proposal. We weren't saying we're going to allow in your neighborhood next year. We really were just trying to educate the community about the topic and then seek input without having an actual proposal. So I just was hoping the commission would digest the information between now and next week, and then we'd come back together and talk about how we'd like to proceed.
I was wondering if it was possible to kind of sort the answers on the basis of what zone folks lived in.
Yeah, and we'll be able to do that.
So that would, I think, reveal some really interesting, if you're in R1, and what your answers were to that, and...
I think that'll be important in understanding how, where, and how we consider it.
Yeah. I think that, when you said that about the overlay zones, and that would be really different if it were for your mother-in-law or for a student, or, and just some of these other things, I think, the parking, and occupancy and stuff, so that'd be interesting.
All right, so we're to digest this and then come back, potentially answer a few questions. Do we pursue this at all? And if so, start to pick the actual constraints. Not that it would come out in ordinance form yet, but that we would, if we were going down that path, then seek another round of agenda, but with specifics, this being the square feet or this being the occupancy.
That's, that would be my recommendation, however the commission would want to proceed.
Okay. Thank you. So now on to North Main.
So then, this is a very early initial look at the zoning on North Main. And we say North Main, we're kind of specifically looking at the corridor between A Street and E Street, so just north of the North Cuplet to the bottom of kind of the North Main Hill. And this is related to a council goal that was established for FY14, which was to expand the perceived downtown area on Main Street from E Street to the South Cuplet. And this, this language actually would reach from E all through downtown. I think the intent, and the South Cuplet, actually, when I looked at this the other day, it caught me by surprise, because I would take you south of Gritman. The primary focus, as I understood and participated in conversations with the council, was really extending it north and picking up from, you know, from A Street and heading up to the north. So that's what we've been focusing on here, through the construction of streetscape improvements such as improvement repair of sidewalks, installation of street trees, and installation of luminaires and furnishings, and evaluations of zoning and development standards by 2016. So that was the council goal that was established. There were some fiscal resources, there were identified some staff resources, and then we had kind of a general timeline where we'd work through streetscape assessment, zoning review, project design, possible zoning revisions if necessary, and then street state construction possibly in 2015. So that is kind of the general outline of the council goal that was adopted by the council last year, and essentially is what's causing us to take a look at this, at this individual area. So right now, we're just slightly behind, but we're conducting that zoning review. And we did have a prior effort that Wendy had her class take a look at kind of the built environment, really through the downtown core and on up north through North Main. I'll send that out electronically, Wendy sent it to me this week, so she's got a summary report from the work that the students have done. And Wendy, do you want to cover, give a summary of that?
Well, basically, the students looked at, if the idea is to carry the character of the center part of downtown north, and what is the, what defines that character? And so they looked at it through a lot of lenses, counting the distance between entries to buildings and density and height-to-width ratios, and how wide the street was, and a lot of different information, and then made some recommendations based on that. But I think the strength in their work was more in the analysis. I mean, that's, kind of gives some fuel to look at, to understand it, so.
So I did have, so, you know, this is really part of the area, just a few photographs. So obviously, it's coming, heading south down the North Main Hill near Rosar. So this is kind of at E Street intersection here. So this is the beginning point of the corridor. Continuing to head south, there's the D Street intersection. We just actually shifted back words. There's the intersection there at D. Again, as you look, you know, we have, obviously, this is somewhat of a traditional highway commercial corridor character. The building is our place well off the street line, large parking area up in front. Now, the exception to that is we do have the Anytime Fitness Building across the street there that was the old Mark IV, that that building has remained and was placed up at the street line in that location. But for the most part, most of the uses, such as Walgreens on the opposite side of Rosar's on the west side, are set back from the street. As you continue to the south, we do have some buildings that are up near the property line, I think they're set back. This would be set right at the 10-foot setback requirement that is in the Motor Business District. So that is something we'll talk about here shortly, that there is a front setback in the Motor Business District of 10 feet. And so that building's right at that 10-foot. And we have other structures kind of in that corridor, they're in that placement as well. And then this is heading a little bit farther south, down near the northern portion of the North Cuplet. And then this is the, this is really the primary course. So if you look down, this is Main Street, and this is where we come swing around. Washington comes around the corner, around the Corner Club, and then continues up to the north. You can see the tree canopy and some of the building massing that exists south of that A Street mark. We continue to have some reasonable massing, especially like on the Moose Building on the east side, but we lose the street trees. Obviously, the roadway goes into a different configuration. It's not a somewhat narrow two-lane roadway with parking on both sides. In this section, you're a three-lane northbound one-way with parallel parking on each side. And so you definitely have a change of character when you leave the street, the tree canopy and the downtown core and head north. And that's, you know, I think there's an intent of the goal is to try to push that farther north of Main Street. This is on Jackson as you swing Jackson, departing from Main as it continues to the south, swinging to the west by St. John Hardware. And this is a view, just a little bit general view, heading, looking at the North Cuplet, looking north up that streetscape. So again, we do have, you know, some buildings and structures that are reasonably close, but we also have these big cutouts where there's portions of the buildings that are set back by some distance. And this is the, obviously, the Corner Club, Moose Lodge Building, and the Grange Building, they're located up near the street there. But all the street trees and, or into, you know, more highway-style lighting of that in this, this area, somewhat narrower sidewalks, as you head farther to the north. And that's Washington, the section of Washington that heads via the Recycling Center from the Rosar's parking lot, and then merges into the main section of Washington.
Jackson.
Jackson, I'm sorry, Jackson. Thank you. And then D Street as it swings into Jackson, heading south. So I asked some of my staff to take a look at this area and begin to kind of get an inventory of existing land uses. Certainly, when we start to look at possible changing, changes to zoning, we want to inventory of land uses, we want to identify uses that are either conforming today or non-conforming today, both in respect to the land use itself as well as the building placement. If it's, you know, within an area of setback, is it a non-conforming structure? And we do evaluations of current zoning and the conformity of the existing uses to that zoning district, and also look at applications of other possible districts to see how the uses would be categorized under different zoning designations. So we're primarily looking at this section of Main up to this location, but there's kind of a natural divide, so we have kind of a larger area that we just inventoried. It doesn't mean that any changes need to be made in the larger area, but it just was kind of the context of what really blocked out relatively well with respect to land uses and parcel configuration and ownership. The current zoning in the area, as I mentioned, is mostly Motor Business, which is the brown shade. There's a small section that's actually industrial, so that's St. John Hardware, and then Grobs there on the south side of A Street are kind of a small portion of industrial. There's some residential office on the section of Washington. Once the, once North 95 swings back onto the Main Street alignment and Washington continues north, we have either predominantly multifamily residential, which is the Grange, R4. We have some small portions of residential office that exist on the west side of Jackson, on the west side here of Washington, and a little bit here on the other side of Jefferson. And then we transition out into the R3 district, which is the dark-blue shaded, so that's getting into two-family. So we're going from the higher-intensity commercial to multifamily, some residential office into R3 outside to the, both the west and the east. Just south of the area is Central Business District. So CB district pretty much picks up and ends there at A Street and does not extend farther We also did kind of a preliminary assessment of what's really available for on-street parking. Yes, if we look at, there are some different zoning options that are available. Central Business is, you know, the zoning that's actually in the downtown core. That really functions well because there is a fairly reasonable supply of public parking available between the diagonal and the angle, the parallel angled parking on Main Street, the two Jackson Street parking lots, and other parking facilities on side streets available in the downtown core. There is actually a fair amount of on-street parking that's available to serve the uses in the downtown core. The areas in pink are really individual space, spaces that are demarcated, so we really don't have a great supply of public parking in that area. This little triangle actually is excess right-of-way, so that technically could become public parking. It's really, it is used as parking, and I think it's used primarily by the occupants of the building directly to the north of it. So that probably could be included. It's a fairly small triangle, and by the time you try to lay out triangles in the parking lots, they don't work very well, if you actually want to strip them out officially. People put a lot of cars, I don't know if they're on their own, surprisingly, but those are somewhat difficult to manage. So the available on-street parking is actually, is somewhat limited in the, in the study area. If we look at the setbacks, the, I think Mike indicated in the outline, there are buildings that are 0 to 5 feet, 6 to 10, and again, 10 or greater. 10 is our setback, front yard setback in the Motor Business District. So the buildings that are highlighted in red are those that don't currently comply with those setback requirements. There are some buildings, like the Hahn, actually, it's non-conforming with respect to setbacks, but it was actually granted a variance during its reconstruction to be reconstructed back up at the street front. The Anytime Fitness Building was approved by the commission through PUD, and so we, I would actually consider that to be a conforming building because of that approval from the PUD. So there are a few here that are probably shaded red that actually are conforming structures, but from the perspective of setback, obviously, that is something that this area was obviously developed underneath different zoning designations at the time, or no zoning designations, just with the right-of-ways delineating building walls. And so it's not surprising that we have a number of structures in the area that don't comply with that front setback requirement. Now, that doesn't mean that the building is, you know, they can change uses, they can alter the buildings, you can update and remodel the buildings. The biggest, I guess, limitation that's, that you encounter becoming a non-conforming structure is that if you were to be destroyed, you'd have to be reconstructed in accordance with the zoning code. So the buildings, if they were destroyed, would have to be, right now, set back 10 feet from the street line unless they're granted a variance by the city, like we did with the Hahn structure. And so when Hahn was destroyed through the fire, essentially, they would have had to shift the building back 10 feet from the back of the sidewalk, and with the variance granted, they were able to reconstruct in their prior location.
The line of a question is going back to that, can you slide for a second? When you look at the land use in that zone, and that, within, inside the red, it's predominantly parking. I mean, it's got a, I bet the percentage of parking land, I realize it's private parking...
Yeah, certainly for...
But if you start adding up all the parking lots that go with most of the businesses, I start to wonder what's going to create the demand for more parking.
Well, the question is, would, the impact of changing to a zoning district that didn't require any off-street parking? And, and so what would be available, public supply, if you did so? If somebody wanted to densify their property and displace parking lots with building, would we have public parking that could supply and serve those uses?
And, you know, from what you're suggesting, it's pretty difficult to provide it on-street, so it would have to be probably parking lots in some way.
In the current configuration of the roadway system, there, other than approaches and acquisition of property to put it into public parking use, there is very limited opportunity on-street.
But on that one, Bill, in some sense, while they're coded as non-conforming as if that were negative...
Right.
They're closer to the streetscape that we would expect for Central Business Districts. So in some sense, it's a positive.
Right. This is just a test against the zoning district standards.
It's a test, but I understand the test, but...
It's saying there's a problem with the zoning code if you want to achieve that other goal. That's what it's saying.
Right. And, and an opportunity in the built environment today...
Right.
...to move in that, to make these all conform by changing the zoning code, and we start to build the streetscape back up. And we have some of it.
If we look at the uses that exist in the district, the, those that are in red are considered to be non-conforming, so there are two, actually, three, a small one here, three residential uses. There's also a residential use in the Stukey side, I don't know if that's still in use, and...
I'm not sure.
So I don't know that this one necessarily is non-conforming. The only non-conforming aspect of it would have been the residential use in the Motor Business District that generally is not permissible except through planned unit development. So we have three residential uses, and then the majority, those that are shown as in yellow are conditionally permitted uses or planned unit developments. That's the Anytime Fitness, that was a PUD. Recycling Center is not a specifically permitted use by right, it's operating underneath a conditional use permit. And then we have a daycare facility, actually, two of them, operating in the Grange Building. And again, daycares are pretty much a condition use in, in most all zoning districts that we have. And so, you know, that's not an unusual circumstance. So for the most part, the uses are largely conforming, with the exception of some of these smaller residential homes that are still within that core and being utilized for residential purposes. If we were to look at the, the general business district, there really, there probably are three different districts you could evaluate. The Central Business District could be one, just the expansion of CB up to the north. The General Business District is another. GB is essentially like the Central Business District. There are no setbacks. The uses are fairly similar, with the exception that you have to provide off-street parking. So GB is intended to be around the periphery of the downtown core, but you are now distant away enough from public parking facilities that parking needs to be provided on the property to serve the use.
Does the residential have to be either behind or on top of...
In the CB, in the Central Business District, residential uses have to be either above or behind commercial uses. In the GB... In the GB, residential uses are just a conditional, conditionally permitted use, so you don't have the limitation of having to be above or behind. And so, GB is kind of slightly like CB with some, you know, modest variations. The one benefit of the GB is that there are no setback requirements. And so, if you're looking at the building placement, you know, that does address that individual issue. It also introduces a couple other complications, that you have some land uses in the area that would not be conforming with the GB zone. So, the ones, the most significant one is the Han rental. Obviously, St. John's is, but that doesn't necessarily have to be his own general business at this point in time. I mean, St. John's can continue to operate in that location, it could be left as industrial as it is today, so I don't want to emphasize that large block of red as being necessarily a bad thing. We're really focusing on Main Street, so, you know, this is just looking through to apply GB over the entire area, and it doesn't, it wouldn't have to take that form. We really don't have the recycling center as a use in the GB district, so it becomes non-conforming as well.
Why wouldn't Han be a conforming use?
Equipment rental is not listed a permissible use in the GB district, which is kind of unusual. It's, and that is just somewhat of anomaly. So, Han is probably the largest non-conforming that you would have that would be created. Gas stations are a conditionally permitted use in the GB districts, as they are in the CB district, so the gas, the station at the corner would become somewhat legal non-conforming, although they're a conditionally permissible use. So, they could prospectively seek a CUP to reestablish the status, but without the CUP, they'd be, they'd be kind of a non-conforming, a legal non-conforming use.
Right. So, if the place ever blew up, they'd have to get a.
They would have to get a.
Conditionally permitted.
Correct. And the residential uses, again, are a conditionally permitted use, so those, again, are kind of in that same status. They would be improving from a non-conforming use without any opportunity to gain a conforming status absent a PUD, which isn't really going to fit for those individual small homes. So, their position would actually improve with the ability to obtain a condition use permit for that use. Until they did, they would just be a legal non-conforming use until that time. We also looked at the urban mixed commercial designation, the UMC district that was primarily developed for the legacy crossing area. And again, the most significant issues are Han. We did not list tool equipment rental facilities in legacy crossing, and we did, actually, excluded gas stations, fueling stations in the UMC. Those are probably two of the most recent, well, with any time as well, significant investments in that area, and so that certainly is, would be a concern that we would have of placing them into a non-conforming status where they would not have any opportunity to gain back to the same position. And then we also have the transmission, I think, repair facility located here that also is not within the UMC and not within the General Business District as well. So, those would be considered non-conforming uses. Again, St. John, but that's, would not necessarily have to be included. The Anytime Fitness would become a conforming use even without the PUD because of the fact that they vertically mixed projects are permissible, permitted use in the UMC district. So, they'd become legally permitted at that time. So, that's an initial review. The Central Business, I thought we had a slide for CB, is essentially the same as GB with the exception of the residential uses that are on the ground floor would become non-conforming, they wouldn't even be conditionally permitted unless they're above or behind a commercial use, and those are predominantly just either single-story or just really the residential structures and homes. So, that's an unlikely situation for them to become legally permissible. Anytime Fitness would be a permitted use by right, so they would go from the CUP to a permitted principal use because of the fact that we've got residential above the commercial use. So, that would work for Anytime Fitness, but it's essentially the same between the two.
And what's the parking requirement that goes with the mixed?
The UMC is just 50% of the required under the code.
Okay. So, it's a better parking situation than GB?
It is. GB.
In terms of.
In terms of reduction of on-street parking requirements, yeah. The GB is the full whatever's required in the table. The UMC was specifically a 50% reduction of the table requirements.
So, Bill, you've said several times to kind of leave off St. John. Would it be, St. John Hardware, sorry. Would it be possible to imagine the zone going up the alley, the zone line going up the alley?
Yeah.
So, you could leave both the triangular piece of St. John Hardware where they started their equipment off, as well as North Jackson?
Correct. When I was asking Mike to take a look at this, that's really what I had asked him to take a look at, but he felt that we really ought to be assessing what was over on Jackson as well. But certainly, that does not have to be included as part of any consideration or action. We still have the same conflicts with three of the principal uses in the location, depending upon the zoning district that we'll be looking at applying. And so, that, that does present some challenges or some things we need to carefully evaluate.
A newbie question. What's the, what's the goal of the rezone?
Well, I think the, at this point.
I was going to ask that. It's not a new question.
I think we were evaluating to see whether the existing zoning helps facilitate achieving the council's goal of expanding the perceived downtown area up north. The, and that, I think that's really the question. If that is truly the council's goal and vision, is they want to expand the perceived downtown area north, then does the zoning support that?
And would be the benefit of that? Of the perceived, of the perception of the expanded downtown. Counselor?
I generally don't say anything at these meetings. I think it would probably come under the idea of trying to, partially would be to help beautify, help make the north entrance to Moscow more appealing and maybe to clean it up a little bit. That would probably be, from my point of view, that would be probably the one real, if there was a real advantage, that would be it. The people that are there are already there, so we're not going to get rid of them, but we could possibly put in some trees, kind of make it, I would say, more of a gradual entrance, because as you're coming down, you can see it. But if, if it were to be brightened up a little bit, just, I would think that would be the, from my point of view anyway, just one out of six, but that's the advantage I would see. I don't see much of an advantage from a commercial point of view or from a point of view of business, since we've got, the setbacks on one side, don't have the setbacks on the other, and there are some things that you can't change, but you can beautify it a little bit.
Yeah, because that was, that was kind of what I was seeing too, is that the big factor out there is, you know, that's, you're never going to get it, for lack of a better word, cozy like the actual downtown core is, just because of the, well, the major north-south highway. But yeah, that, that makes more sense, because I can, I can see that as you're coming down the hill, I mean, you do have a, the whole thing is laid out there right before you, so.
Yeah, I think there's an aesthetic.
Yeah.
Aspect of it. There is, if the city's going to make an investment in improving infrastructure, planting trees, I think you could see a property valuation increase, possibly. I think if you could address the setback issue with the structures and remove the threat of, if they got destroyed, they couldn't be reconstructed in that form, you could increase some property value. And possibly incentivize more investment in the area. I don't think you're, you're never, like, I think it's very true, you're never going to make it like Main Street, just because of the way the roadway section functions there.
That's an interesting thought, though. I mean, if this, we were using this term perceived, and, and so, we're talking about folks that drive into Moscow and how they perceive the city and the, but perception works both ways. So, if, you know, even folks that already are here and sort of start perceiving that as more of the kind of downtown, I mean, I could see that, I don't know, maybe people start raising their expectations or working together more on what the city looks like or, you know, I don't know.
Well, it seems like some of the business owners have started to do that. So, I would, because I would say Anytime Fitness by trying to be a mixed-use property and a zero, basically a front, almost a zero setback rate.
Yeah.
It is a zero.
It is changing the pattern. That's the typical strip development setback from the highway, white in the corridor, and same with Han rental. They could have chosen to redevelop that property when it burned differently, but I thought it was pretty cool that they decided to be a little more urban in there, in the way they went about it, and it certainly helps improve the visual perception on.
Yep, they created a lot.
And so, that's two business owners that are changing the pattern and had to fight, sort of fight the zoning code to be able to do it. So, I don't, I guess I don't agree that it's only just aesthetic. I think it's also a business decision that they're making, that they want to be maybe more considered part of downtown than just a commercial strip.
Joel, did you have a? I think it, I think there is also a possible commercial benefit in terms of possibility of intensification of use if, if there were setbacks were allowed to put more square footage of, of building.
Yeah, because that looked like the big problem to me with a lot of the existing buildings, that if you had to rebuild them actually to the, with the 10-foot setback, you, most of them, you'd lose 10 feet of building.
Right.
So, well, I agree, John, that the folks who are there are there. There's also some amount of transition in parts of that neighborhood. There's some businesses, the transmission shop, is it really in business? I mean, it looks so, it's a glass place next to it.
No, the auto body transitioned.
Auto body is.
Yeah, so the auto body shop has transitioned into a new use.
And across from the recycling center, we got a building built into that lot.
Correct.
So, there, and to the extent that there's change, which is slow in Moscow, but if we got the zoning the way we wanted it, we might imagine over the next 10, 15 years that some things would adjust relative to that.
Those residential, one is an apartment building that is falling down, but it's still fully rented all of the time. And then there's a couple little houses on the other side, on the west side, that are in better shape, and they're just about always rented. But eventually, yeah, they're, they're going to cost too much to keep up. That whoever owns them is going to, you know, take them down and either put up something else or sell the property or whatever.
If you're, if you're just looking at aesthetics, I appreciate the commercial aspect, if that makes sense. If you're just looking at aesthetics, is there any reason the city can't address the aesthetics given the current zoning designation?
From the perspective of improvements in the right-of-way?
The trees.
The trees. Yeah, and that's kind of an independent aspect here. In that goal, there are kind of multiple layers of actually the street design, but also looking, if the intent was, will it try to, you know, expand the perception of Main Street, a significant aspect of that is the building wall and how they relate to the roadway. And so, that's why we incorporate an aspect of the, at least, review of zoning to determine whether, you know, the zoning that exists there today is the best thing to achieve, what the council's hoping. There is nothing that's precluding the city from pursuing, and as part of the beautification project we're working on right now, we actually are programming street trees up the corridor. That, I think, is going to happen regardless of this review. If the review determines that the zoning that's there is appropriate and fits and stays, then that's it, you know, the other aspects will continue as part of the goal. But we did want to have at least an opportunity for the commission to review the corridor, consider whether any changes are appropriate, and make those recommendations to the council.
Yeah, kind of if we can exert steady, gentle pressure to go ahead and build buildings right up on the street, things like that, you know, over the course of 20 years, it would make a difference.
Okay. Thanks. Good questions. Other, I'm reminded, one other thing was the, following Wendy's student's presentation, I left discouraged to some extent at the thought of the difficulty of extending the Main Street experience north. But subsequently, I looked at the Jackson Street experience. There is a three-lane roadway, and there's a big chunk of it north of Third that has a good tree canopy and a lot of the character that makes it attractive as a pedestrian space and as a space to drive through compared to the North Main piece. That peters out when you get down by the Jackson Street parking lot, and peters out further as you get down there to American West Bank and stuff. But I think that we could look and say, there are other places where we have Highway 95 and, some of Washington also, has a, has a tree, tree canopied experience on a three-lane road, so it doesn't have to be the more idyllic Main Street with two lanes and diagonal parking and.
Yeah, what they've got going for them, though, is they only have half of Highway 95, you know, as opposed to a pretty good chunk of this.
As opposed to having five lanes. Two lanes plus the turn lane, yeah. Other thoughts before we move on?
I think part of my perception of North Main, and it becomes most strong as I'm driving North Main by the Rosar's parking lot, is everybody turning everywhere. The, the turning, the traffic turning patterns associated with the various, various couplets coming in, you suffer angst as you, as Washington joins Main, and again, when Jackson branches off there, and the various turns into the various entrances into the Rosar's parking lot and into the drugstore and so on, create a very, very different experience for a driver.
Would that change if, over time, if the zone did change and the zero setback was actually allowed, and that Rosar's parking lot accepted some new development along the corridor, then all of a sudden you're closing in the corridor and you're channeling where traffic goes and giving it some, some referencing space? I mean, I talk about that intersection where Troy, the Troy Highway intersects the couplet, and it's like, I mean, I've lived here a long time and I've seen that intersection change, and still, to this day, I don't know where I am when I hit that intersection. Just the geography of nowhere. And so, having some, you know, buildings that start to give you.
One of my favorite awful intersections is the, is the jog of the zoning line up in the corner. And I use it, I use it regularly as I come and go, but.
And you earn that yourself, you feel lucky.
I, I boycotted it for a while after I served on a jury for a. I, I boycotted it for a while after I served on a jury for a personal injury lawsuit involving that intersection where somebody got hit. But, but I still, I still use it.
It's kind of my only route to the brewery, so I have to.
But I, but I do think, yeah, the traffic movements there could be improved. Maybe, maybe Wendy's point is, would be helpful, but-
Well, it's, it's really difficult. Oops, I didn't mean to do that. Let's go back. If there was an opportunity to straighten out this intersection, that would alleviate that issue. If you could consolidate down to two points of access rather than three on Rosar's, that would really help. There's kind of, right now, three approaches. There's a lot of activity from DTE. It's just, especially if it's a PM.
And traffic is just slowing down and coming down the hill.
If it's five o'clock right after work, there's just a lot of things happening. People heading to Redbox at Walgreens or heading to Rosar's or making the, it's, it's just a-
And I think, I think, well, I was very disappointed by the state reconstruction of that segment, that it did not do some things which could have improved it, but it didn't.
That's one of the most, I'm going to say polite intersections in town. I, I used to live down there and I used to work down there. And I think it almost became mandatory if you lived and worked down there that you gave every break you could. And then you accepted every break that people gave you. And there have been a few close ones and every now and then there's a wreck. But for a jog in the middle of coming down the hill at a fairly good speed, people do seem to kind of watch where they're going, keep the foot on the brake and, because it's a, it can be a mess.
The personal injury case involved a question as to whether the car coming down, coming southbound toward E there was actually intending to turn onto E or intending to turn into the first Rosar's parking lot entrance. Lots of people have their turn signal on well before they get there. And the, the guy pulling out of E misinterpreted the turn signal.
That can happen in any short, block-length kind of environment. Yeah. All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of a new idea that we are trying to implement, recommended readings. You'll recall, and it's in the minutes, a discussion from last time, both the thought, and I'll review for Greg and Rebecca, that we used to have a planning journal that we got quarterly, just a small publication, but had some interesting things to read in it. And for a while now, we have been without any sort of professional learning mechanism because the journal collapsed. Anyway, and so the thought that I'm proposing that we try is that we collect some readings on the web by URL and that at this meeting, it's a reminder that we're doing that. And that by next meeting, they will be available to read from the website of the commission, not in our agenda, but on the commission's website, which has the advantage that it also makes them publicly accessible. And that over this period, I guess we have to get some mechanism in place, but that at our next meeting, at sort of this, next to last, before we adjourn, if anybody has things they wish to discuss from one or another of the readings, this would be the opportunity to do it. If you don't have anything to discuss, there's no obligation. It's, it's just an attempt to stimulate us and provide various kinds of thoughtful things to read. And then in terms of topics, I sent out a list, I didn't bring it here, with some thinking about things that we might want to read that related to things that we've recently done, say urban ag or Legacy Crossing, sort of urban redevelopment of an industrial zone, or things that we might want to read that are upcoming relative to what we're doing, how to use zoning to revitalize a highway stretch or ADUs. So that we're, we're reading things that are broadly connected to the kind of work that we're doing. Anyway, I sent in a couple to Bill and I would invite that if you have some, and at least at present, our thought is that Bill is our editor and he will window through the list of whatever gets sent. Three to five, I think, was kind of what we were saying. Not, not an overwhelming reading list. And hopefully they'll be scattered around on several topics. So this is the reminder and invitation to send readings that you think might be interesting along those lines to Bill.
It's a great idea.
All right. Any last item for the good of the order before we adjourn? That's it. We're adjourned. Thank you.